I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the board meeting. This is an open meeting in that you're able, you have various options for joining us. We are keeping a record, individual record of the meeting. Start with awards recognition and correspondence. Commissioner Doran.
Thank you Chairman Murdock. I do have several letters of commendation that are received from the sheriff's office. As soon as I can find the. On July 30th, this is dispatcher Kerry Roberts and dispatcher Hannah Foster. On July 31st, 2021, deputy writes dispatch to suspicious call up on highway 204. This is incident number 2107310293. The call was about a male indicating that his 18-month-old son and vehicle were taken by a roommate. The roommate and friend were nowhere to be found. Deputy rates gave the father a ride to his residence in an attempt to locate the missing roommate, friend and child. The deputy and the father were not able to locate any of the missing persons. Upon your arrival at the work, at work, the morning of August 1st, both dispatchers realized that neither the vehicle hadn't been entered as stolen, nor that the missing 18-month-old child hadn't been entered as a missing either. Dispatcher Roberts assigned deputy Elwood to the incident right away. At 11:48 a.m., I received a phone call from dispatcher Roberts advising of these facts. I immediately asked that the child be entered as missing and that an amber alert be activated for the child due to the circumstances surrounding the incident. Dispatch Roberts. Process of an amber alert and getting the child entered as missing endangered. Dispatcher Foster was also an part of the process of getting the child and vehicle entered in a timely manner. She was making phone calls and handling requests for assistance from dispatcher Roberts as needed. Both dispatcher Roberts and dispatcher Foster supported each other as a true dispatch partners. Because of their combined efforts and expedience, there was positive outcome to what could have been a complete tragedy. Dispatcher Roberts and dispatcher Foster used clear, active listening skills and communicated effectively, both written and audibly. Dispatchers Roberts and Foster kept the deputies and myself informed of the situation. I am extremely proud of both of you. You understood the urgency of the situation, obtained the tools and procedures to get the ball rolling, reacted professionally without hesitation and did an outstanding job, which resulted in a very positive outcome, the safe return of a child. Thank you for the incredible job you did, for your dedication and service to the Yumato County Sheriff's Office on this incident and on a daily basis. Submitted by Captain Karen Crimmer.
Anything else?
There was one, I'm sorry, there was one more. There's a second, a second one.
I didn't have any. I would note that we're beginning to get thank you notes from the Yumato County Sheriff. We will procure pile up.
That's one I just read.
As we move forward.
This has 40 taps, Brew. This is the second one. Sorry. Put that straight so a lot of people are tuning in.
On August 13th, dispatcher Kylie Peck. On August 13th, at about 20:20 hours, you took a call from a shooting victim near 40 taps, Brew House in Pembleton. You were the fire EMS and UPD dispatcher on this extremely busy shift. While taking the call for service of the shooting incident, you were actively speaking to a Yumato police officer who was in need of assistance. You continued to help him while taking the pertinent information from the reporter. Initially, you were speaking with the victim, then another person came onto the line. Throughout the exchange, you realized the significance of the unfolding situation and calmly but firmly kept obtaining necessary information to provide assistance both the law enforcement side and the EMS side. You had some problems with toning for the ambulance, but persevered through the, through that, getting the medical personnel headed in the right direction. This interruption didn't stop you from proceeding forward with the toning of EMS personnel and you continued to consider the EMS personnel's safety, asking them to stage until law enforcement stated it was safe to respond to the scene. The entire call lasted six minutes and 54 seconds. Throughout that time, you provided emergency medical dispatch instructions for the gunshot wound. You continued to reassure both the victims and the caller who took over for the victim. Additionally, throughout the exchange on the phone, you continued to gather information about the suspect, direction of travel and other details of importance for responding law enforcement units. Due to your training and experience, help was given in a timely manner without further victims or injury. You did an outstanding job of communicating with your partners in the room, who were also fielding further calls on this shooting. I am extremely proud of you. You understood the urgency of the situation, obtained the tools and procedures to get the EMS rolling towards the victim, provided pre-arrival instructions to the person on the scene, assisting the victim, and you reacted professionally without hesitation and did an outstanding job. This was a situation where the potential for a number of things to go wrong could have happened. By your calm demeanor, continued reassurance to the involved parties in dispatching of both law enforcement and EMS personnel, you were able to provide outstanding service to all involved. Thank you for the incredible job you did during this critical incident. Thank you for your continued dedication and service to the Yumato County Sheriff's Office on this incident and on a daily basis, as it is greatly appreciated. Submitted by Captain Karen Crimmer.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, acknowledgement of the minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to commercially approve the minutes from the August 18th.
Second.
Compared to A.I.
A.I.
Okay. Any additions to the agenda? No. Okay. Any public input from visitors on items not on, already on the agenda? Okay, we will move from our regular meeting format into a land use hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumato County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is George Murdock. I am the chairman of the Yumato County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning the applicant, Richard Hunsaker's, appeal of the planning commission's decision regarding land division request number LD 4N-1054-21. The approved request is partitioned tax lots 1100 and 1200 on map 4N 2804. Would result in three parcels, each at least 10 acres inside. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Are there any questions as to proceed? All right. Planning staff.
Before that, is there another thing that you're going to let ask about?
Oh, ex parte.
Ex parte? With any objections to jurisdiction of the board?
I think what he's referring to is, at this time, I'd like to make the comments that I have had conversations with Richard Hunsaker, not on the topic that we're addressing today, but on the zoning issues early, and don't feel that there is a conflict of interest at this point. Have discussed it with council.
Oh, excuse me. Just for the record, I will call for a sentient bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, objections to jurisdiction. All right. Read the following declaration. The agenda identifies the applicant substantive criteria for evaluating the request and staff will view these criteria. All testimony and evidence may be directed towards those criteria. Failure to raise issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Division Appeals based on that issue. All right, at this point, I will call for the planning office to respond.
Thank you commissioners. My name is Megan Green, county planner. The item before you today is an appeal of the planning commission's decision for land division number LD-4N-1054-21. On June 16th, 2021, the Hunsaker zone change request was approved by the county board of commissioners. Approval of the Hunsaker zone change allowed the applicant to subsequently act on the planning commission's approval of the applicant's land division. The applicant was dissatisfied with the conditions of approval placed on the land division and is now appealing the planning commission's decision to the board of commissioners. The appeal was, was received by county planning on July 6th, 2021. Despite the appeal in process, the applicant submitted the final partition plot milers to county planning on August 9th, 2021, to be signed by the county planning director. Partition plot milers cannot be signed by county planning until all precedent conditions of approval have been satisfied. To date, the only conditions that have been satisfied by the applicant are precedent conditions number one and number two. The county's adopted land division standards are applied to each land division application. The standards are outlined in the board packets. I'm not going to individually state them at this time unless there's clarification requested. The planning commission's decision includes 12 precedent conditions of approval and one subsequent condition. The applicant is appealing precedent conditions number three through number eight. The conditions in the applicant's appeal reasons are also outlined in the board's packets. The packet member provides brief responses, while the included addendum to the final findings provides more detail on the adopted findings and additional insight from county staff and other agencies. The applicant maintains the burden of approving compliance with all applicable adopted approval criteria. Applicants who disagree with the adopted criteria and standards have the right and option to apply for an amendment to the county's development code. In conclusion, an addendum to the findings is provided in exhibit two. The other 10 exhibits include the adopted findings, approval letter, planning commission packet, comments received and the applicant's appeal packet. The board of commissioners may agree with the planning commission's approval and conditions applied to the applicant's land division for compliance with the county's land division standards. Or the board may accept the appeal in whole or part and write and adopt new findings together with the essential connection between the standard and the new condition meant to satisfy the standard. Staff, as always, is available for questions and to provide additional information. This concludes staff report.
All right, are there other proponents who wish to speak? All right.
Chairman Murdock.
Yes. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name's Richard Hunsaker. I am the appellate in this particular hearing.
Chairman Murdock, this is Bob Walder, planning director. Before we move to proponent testimony, are there questions for staff from the staff report?
I have a question real quick for Megan. You mentioned that the applicant was dissatisfied with the conditions of the approval placed on the land division. Are there, are these conditions, are there more conditions for this applicant than any other? Or are these the same for any other applicant who would have submitted an application?
These are the same for all applicants that submit land division applications.
Thank you.
Commissioner Doran, give me questions.
No, I've had discussions with planning department on this issue and I'll have comments.
Okay, Mr. Chair, proceed.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for taking time to listen to my appeal. In my discussions with planning staff and in my application to appeal, the issues that are unclear to me and need some definition from you are the naming of the road and number two, the emergency vehicle turnaround. Since the planning commission acted, the staff has met with the city of Hermiston and I believe have agreement on the naming of the road. The clarification I need from staff revolves around the condition of naming the road on the plat. So I need clarification. Do I simply note on the plat, future Northwest 17th Street? Is that acceptable?
So, the requirement is that you submit a road naming application, so it has to go through the process to get approval. It's already gone through that with the city, just through staff conversations. They've, they're in concurrence, so it should be Northwest 17th Street. But other agencies that are involved during that process are the postal service, county dispatch and a couple of other agencies that cross check to make sure that that works with their system. In addition to that, it needs to be named Northwest 17th Street on the plat. That's what actually dedicates the road as Northwest 17th Street.
But this is not a road dedication. My understanding is that it's to remain a private easement and upon annexation to the city, the city would name the street.
That's correct. It's going to remain a private easement, but it's still going to be named Northwest 17th Street, formally as shown on the partition plat.
So do I need to say future Northwest 17th or simple?
No.
Northwest 17th.
Just Northwest 17th Street.
All right, and would you forward me the street naming application?
Yes, I can do that.
Great. The second issue revolves around the requirement of emergency vehicle access. And I understand all the issues involved in the fire life safety and the need to have vehicle turnaround access. What I had proposed was a different style of access and it's my understanding that Reggie and/or Scott had approved that if I can provide them with an adequate drawing shown on the plat, is that correct?
So the county requirement is a 50-foot radius turnaround. That's adopted in the development code and I did reach out to Yumato County Fire District Number One. Let me find the email in the packet, so just give me one moment, please. So on page 152, Scott, Scott with the county fire district one, said that this is an acceptable means for a fire apparatus, provided the requirements are fully met. That said, the county is not obligated to accept this as an alternative. Based on what has been provided, a page from the fire code and a couple of pictures, I'm not able to make a determination that the area proposed is adequate or meets other requirements of section 53 or appendix D of the Oregon Fire Code. So from what Scott has shared, it sounds like the Yumato County Fire District Number One turnaround standard is different than Yumato County's adopted standard for turnaround.
Correct. So whose standard do I need to meet?
The county.
And will the county accept the hammerhead as an alternative to a cul-de-sac?
If one is presented that would meet the radius turnaround, I'm sure it would be entertained.
Great, I can prepare that. The other thing is, is it possible to make this a condition of the first building permit? Not knowing where a driveway is going to be for any of the three parcels? Difficult.
So that the emergency turnaround is supposed to be dedicated as part of that access easement for use of all of those parcels that are served by the access easement. So it needs to be shown on the partition plat.
Yeah, I understand that. My question is, is there a specific location that meets that requirement?
No, that's up to you as the applicant to decide.
So one emergency turnaround needs to be provided, approved by the fire district, approved by the county planning department?
Yes.
Great, very good, I can deal with that. Just a little background information, if I might. This creation of these three lots, if you've had a chance to look at the pictures I provided, there's going to be CCNRs drafted that control and address some of planning department's concerns. The CCNRs will determine that only a single family dwelling may be constructed on either of the three parcels and that the single-family dwelling will have a minimum living area of 2,850 square feet. And the current deed restrictions on these properties call for the three property owners, Dimbat, Flays and Hunsaker to share in the maintenance cost of the private easement. The CCNRs will address that and include the new parcels in the maintenance agreement so that that private easement can be maintained for county standards. And I'll sit by and be happy to answer any other questions you might have, thank you.
I guess at this point in time, I would reference either Mr. Walder or counsel. It would appear that we are going to need additional submissions, is that correct?
I think at this point, it looks like the applicant is okay with the conditions as presented. It's just his method of complying with those conditions. And it looks like the applicant is satisfied with the conditions as presented by the planning commission.
Yeah, as long as I can address the, Chairman, I'm sorry. As long as I can address the emergency access turnaround in a satisfactory manner with the Yumato County Fire and Yumato County planning.
And it sounds like, I want to make sure that you indicate where you want it to be located and that it could be a hammerhead rather than a cul-de-sac.
That's correct and I'll provide engineered drawings.
And those would comply with the conditions as presented, so I don't think there'd be any reason to change the conditions to meet what the applicant is requesting.
As long as, as long as it's understood that the location of that turnaround is of my choosing.
That is correct, it just all have to be on your, the partition plat is all.
Correct, correct.
I think the county doesn't care about the location, just that it is there.
Very good, that was not clear to me.
All right, any other questions or clarifications?
I want to make sure staff is okay with what we've discussed.
Commissioners, this is Bob Walder, planning director. I think the applicant's suggestion should work. I think though the commissioners may want to modify the condition that requires the 50-foot radius turnaround, to have some language in there about a hammerhead, if that's what the applicant is proposing as an alternative. Note that, I'm just looking at the, the standard here. I, I think if they were to show that on the, the partition plat, plat would be acceptable. We, we may want to get buy-in from the fire chief on the, on the location of that prior to recording the partition plat.
I'd be happy to present that to the fire chief prior to the submission of the plat.
My question to Bob is, do we need to address it separately? Or could we address the hammerhead turnaround at the time the plat's submitted?
Well, it'd be a, it would be done with the preliminary partition prior to the recording of the plat, so we would want to see that before the, we would want to see it shown on the, the plat before it's recorded.
I guess that's what I was.
It would remain a precedent condition. I, I would just suggest we have some language in the condition that, you know, requires verification from the fire district that they're, they accept the location of the proposed hammerhead. I think that would be the assurance that, you know, everyone is satisfied with it.
Question of council, do the notes that are becoming part of the minutes of this meeting satisfy that we are where we need to be with respect to?
I think probably what we might want to do is just as Bob suggested, amend proceeding condition three to also allow for, rather than just a 50-foot radius turnaround area, that could be accomplished through an alternate hammerhead approach. And I think if once those two conditions are amended, then the planning commission's decision could be approved.
Are commissioners satisfied with your questions of both the applicant and the planning department?
That's one verified, what I was saying. Obviously, the approved fire chief obligation of hammerhead, what was the other one?
That a hammerhead would comply with the, satisfy the 50-foot radius turnaround.
Okay, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Just for my clarification, so we'd have to come out to public hearing and have a separate resolution to approve that ahead of our approval of the overall.
Right, the overall plat will come at a separate time.
As long as it's in place before the public hearing ends, then we should be in good shape.
The, what the action would be to approve the decision of the planning commission with the amended conditions as discussed. And then when the final partition plat has been approved, the tentative one has been approved by. approved by the Planning Commission, it'll then be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for signature.
Okay, that's what.
At a later date.
That's just the way it's exactly.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, with that, we'll move out of the hearing mode.
Before we move out, Chairman Murdock, I do want to make a comment on this and not to get into details at all, it's been a perfect storm for Mr. Hunzaker on this development of this property. Some of the past languages, um, from previous planning, um, depart- departments and, and decisions, um, combined with a lot of hard work from our Planning Department, from Megan and Bob, oh, has put everybody in a little bit difficult, uh, situation. Mr. Hunzaker tries to develop some very, very nice property along the river, some of the last personal property, private property available. I, I, I do want to thank everybody for the patience they've had through this because it's been abnormal. Uh, I want to thank Megan and Bob for, for very much for, uh, representing the county and making sure that, that we do follow those details. I'd like to thank Mr. Hunzaker for his patience, I guess is the term I'd use, um, as we worked through this. Um, as a developer, I'm sure that he sees all, all different types and different sorts of hurdles and walls that need to be jumped and, and climbed over throughout his, uh, development territory, but I'd like to thank everybody involved, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I would echo Commissioners' comments about Planning Staff, they've been very helpful and very tolerant, um, in this application as it has provided to be more than difficult.
Okay, we'll come out of the hearing and, uh, proceed with action. Uh, I believe that the, the action that would be proposed has been quantified by Council. I'm comfortable with, with what was presented by Council.
Mr. Chairman, are there any other public comments?
Called for them, I haven't heard any.
Thank you.
So, are we in hearing order?
No, we're out of hearing, okay, great, sure.
So, Mr. Chair, I have the approval of the plan from the Planning Commission with the amendment of a fifty-foot radius for hammerhead, those on the plat, partition plat, and to get prior approval from the Fire Chief of Fire District Number One on the location of the hammerhead prior to submitting of the plat. Does that work?
All right, other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go back into hearing mode, uh, this is the.
Excuse me, excuse me, Chairman. Do you need, do you need to address my concern about the naming of the street?
I thought that was addressed, it was gonna be, what was it, Northwest Seventeenth or something like that?
Yeah, I don't think, uh, the way the, the condition is, um, set out in the Planning Commission decision, uh, will, uh, will be met with what the understanding is regarding the naming of the street.
That the plat should read, the plat should read Northwest Seventeenth.
Great, I'm good.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back into hearing mode, City of Yumitala Ordinance Co-Adoption Public Hearing.
This is coming back before the Board of Commissioners for an official co-adoption of a City of Yumitala Ordinance, uh, number eight fifty. This is the City Council adopted it last night. Uh, this is officially expanding the urban growth boundary of the City of Yumitala to include additional one-hundred-and-fifty acres. Uh, this is before the Board of Commissioners' last board meeting, when we co-adopted the plan amendment. This is officially just co-adopting the ordinance that implements that plan amendment. So, what the request is, is to adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash zero eight. This will officially co-adopt the City of Yumitala ordinance, amending and expanding their, their urban growth boundary.
Questions of Council?
I'd move for adoption ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eight.
Maybe we're still hearing.
Oh, it's still.
Yeah, this is an ordinance for a prior hearing.
I apologize.
Anything else? All right, we'll go out of hearing mode and take action now.
I'd move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, young man, you got something else?
No.
Item number three is stiff grants.
Thank you, Commissioners, this is Megan Green, Transit Coordinator. Um, previously, the Board of Commissioners approved an increased in systems sustainability fund of two-hundred-thousand dollars. This is due to an unprogrammed carryover in funds. Um, applications for these funds were opened from June eighth, twenty twenty-one to July sixteenth. Two applications were submitted, one from the City of Hermiston in the amount of seventy-thousand dollars for marketing of their work taxi program, and, um, the hiring of a consultant to work on the STF and STIF consolidation program. The second application was received from the City of Pendleton, who requests forty-two-thousand dollars for marketing to increase ridership and awareness for their public transit system. Approving both projects would result in eighty-eight-thousand dollars, uh, remaining in the system sustainability fund. These funds will continue to carry over for future Yumitala County projects. Both of these applications received, um, recommended approval from the STF Advisory Committee on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, and the requested action is to approve, um, both of these projects, so seventy-thousand dollars to the City of Hermiston and forty-two-thousand dollars to the City of Pendleton for their STF formula fund projects for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Do we need two separate motions on that, or will one suffice?
Two are fine, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval to award seventy-thousand dollars to the City of Hermiston out of the STF court plan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move approval for forty-two-thousand dollars to the City of Pendleton, for Yumitala County statewide transportation approved, STF plan as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number four, creation of position CDDP, this is Beck.
Good morning. I'm Kim Beck, uh, Director of Yumitala County Developmental Disabilities Program. I'm here to respectfully request that we be allowed to create a service coordinator position. This position specifically would be to do a dual role, one is to work on our service equity study and plan that was added to our state contract, and also provide service coordination as needed. The funds for this, um, additional position are covered with the additional state funding that we received, uh, for this next biennium, and if something were to happen to those funds, we have carryover dollars as well to cover that.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item five is a maintenance payable.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager. Uh, two payables for, in front of you, one is for Murphy's Heating and Air for six thousand six seventy-five. That was for, uh, new HVAC unit in the wood and metal shop. Um, since we relocated the wood and metal shop, we no longer had, uh, access to those units. Uh, this unit will also be moved when we, uh, build our new building, so it will not be left with the building.
So, just to confirm that, the unit for sixty-eight twenty-five will be coming to the new building with us?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, approval.
Second.
It is six, six-eight-two-five is the correct number?
Total, that's the.
Total.
Six-six-seven-five.
Scroll, scroll down whoever's running that computer.
Yeah.
To the.
I have two different figures.
Right.
It's a hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, that is not accounted for, Mark.
Oh, the hundred-and-fifty dollars was to replace the, um, mini, mini supply in the health department at Sam Cooke.
Oh, so that's a separate building.
Yeah, that's a separate building.
And that's a separate bill, all right.
But it's on one table.
Same invoice.
Right. There's a Sam Cooke. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the approval will be for the full eight, six thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
That's what records show that, okay.
Okay.
And six?
The second one is, uh, it is for, uh, chiller repair. Um, the, uh, chiller has been kicking out on low water pressure, um, we were having to reset it on a regular basis, and so I brought vendors in to, uh, do some work on the chiller. Um, the, uh, for the, what's reflected in front of you is the five thousand twenty-eight, and that was for those repairs.
What building?
Uh, Maye Courthouse.
I thought that was a new chiller.
It is, but we have the, all the existing old system.
Did you say Maye Courthouse or Mini Courthouse?
May, yeah.
So, so my question now is, so in the Bill Hansel room, I can't remember what number that is.
One-fourteen.
Are we gonna be able to get air conditioning?
In, in where?
One-fourteen.
Uh, yeah, you should have air conditioning in there.
Should have and do have is two, two, two big different things.
Yeah, well, the, the main problem with air movement is the air handlers, which are currently out for RFQ.
Gotcha. All right, move for approval of the maintenance payable to the chiller.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item number seven, BOTA appointments.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dale and I with Director Administrative Services, and before you is the appointments for the BOTA Board, the Commissioners are required to appoint Board members for the Property Board of Appeals for taxes, and we have before you Jerry Baker, William Elfrin, Bill Elfrin, and Christine Wallace.
Mr. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval or adoption of order BCC twenty twenty-one dash zero seven one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item number eight, publication notice?
Whoop, he said thank you.
All right. Publication notice?
The next item before the Board is the official, um, approval of the newspaper that is, the annual tax foreclosure notice is published. The option, uh, is for, and the recommendation is to put it in the East Argonian, so requesting the, the adoption of order number TX two zero twenty-one dash zero six to authorize that publication.
Chairman, approval, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is BCC two oh two one dash oh seven two, uh, it's a petition to form the Meacham East Livestock District. Council, would you please explain the change, there has been a change in the law, is that enough?
Yes. Um, two years ago, the law was changed, so the formation of livestock districts is a little different than what it was then historically. In the past, it required an election, uh, that election process has been eliminated. Now, the process for the formation is you receive a petition for the formation, uh, you have a public hearing on that petition, notices, um, are sent to the property owners within the proposed district along the boat, plus those property owners that are located within five hundred feet of the proposed district. At the public hearing, uh, the testimony can be presented by anybody, and if the Board is in approval with the formation, then the petitioner then goes back to all the property owners and a signature is required from the property owners to actually authorize the formation of the district, and in that case, it has to be more than fifty percent of the owners sign for the, uh, in support of it.
Is it, is it, is that based upon, uh, the scope of property holdings or simply a property holder?
It's the property owner, so.
Is it not prorated by the amount of land you own?
No, no, it's pure by property owners.
Yes.
Just for general knowledge, and I think I'm pretty well up to speed, but maybe for everybody else, what is a livestock district?
Uh, in a life, uh, in Oregon, the general law is open range, so that anyone that owns livestock, they can let their livestock roam, roam wherever, with some exceptions. In a livestock district, the opposite is true, um, any livestock, certain livestock, uh, as named in the district, has to be fenced in, so it's up to the livestock owner within the district to fence their livestock in. Outside of the district, it is up to property owners to fence livestock out, if they don't want to own their property.
Thank you.
And in this case, this, um, in this, uh, the Meacham East Livestock District, uh, the proposal, uh, location is around Meacham, the incorporated area of Meacham. It encompasses about two thousand acres, um, over four sections, um, not many la- uh, large parcels within that, so there are going to be a lot of property owners that will be notified if you want to proceed with the formation.
Does it take a hundred percent?
No, fifty.
Fifty or fifty percent plus one?
Uh, it's fifty percent plus one really, but i- it's the majority.
Other questions? Do you want to move?
And so, it's being requested today is just to move forward on the petition and set the, uh, public hearing on the formation on October twentieth.
Chair, I'd move approval of adoption of BCC twenty twenty-one dash zero seven two.
I second that, or we're not adopting it though, right?
All you're doing is setting, scheduling this for a public hearing is all, it's moving it forward.
Says the question, action, adopt order.
Which, which is.
Oh, 'cause we're moving it forward.
Sorry, it's.
Right, that, that will set the public hearing, is what it does. It accepts a petition and moves it forward to a public hearing.
Do I get a second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number ten, the board meeting schedule.
Um, as usual, the annual AOC conference in November will, uh, be during a regularly scheduled board meeting, so the proposal is to change it from the seventeenth to the twenty-third, which is the following Tuesday, not Wednesday, because that's the Wednesday right, the day before Thanksgiving.
According to what I see here, we, that would, that would be within anticipation that all three Commissioners are available for the, the fall board meetings, okay?
For the remainder of them, you mean?
Remainder of the fall board meetings.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the only, the only, uh, at this point, the only time Commissioners are not available is on the seventeenth.
Your motion?
Move to adopt calendar estimate, can't Commissioners' calendar estimate?
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Regional homeless shelter.
Sorry, wait one second. I went too far back.
As, um, as we addressed many different issues, uh, throughout, one of them that, that, uh, the Commissioners have taken seriously is the homelessness issue or houselessness issue, uh, throughout the county, different parts of the county have addressed it in different parts of the way. I think with Commissioner, or Chairman Murdock's lead, um, the promise in has been a, uh, at least to this degree, a very satisfactory, um, solution for the Pendleton area, um, and what the West End has looked at, and this has been kind of developed, uh, with the lead of the City of Yumitala, um, their city manager, uh, David Stockfield, kind of took the bull by the horns and began this process. Looked, uh, in conjunction with a group called Stepping Stones, has looked at several different places. Stepping Stones has been around for several years now and has looked at different properties. Um, what this does. Um, what this does is kind of consolidate, at least on a temporary basis, uh, the different proposals that are out there. There is a grant out there right now for a million dollars for a, a modular unit, which is a temporary unit. And, um, what we're trying to do is find, as a group, trying to find property that would be available, um, that could even potentially satisfy on a temporary basis that this winter's, uh, warming shelter. So what, what I'm bringing to the Commissioners today is a request to be able to negotiate, uh, with the city of Umatilla, the city of Hermiston, um, and by extension, the city of Stanfield and Echo, along with Stepping Stones, a, um, use of up to two acres on the back parcel of, of five N, two eight, two two, zero zero, zero, two three, zero zero. Front portion of this, the front, eight acres of this eighteen and a half acre parcel is under lease right now to grant it construction where they store equipment and material, uh, rock and sand and gravel materials. This portion that we're looking at would be on the backside of Lynn Road. Um, the reason that this is maybe not as attractive as some other places, but still, um, very attractive is the ability for transportation to, to, um, service this area and still be able to take, um, clients, the homeless clients or warming sheltering station clients to services in either Umatilla, Hermiston, or Pendleton as the routes travel. So, um, it, it is a usable site. It's basically a, a flat piece of land right now. It does not have any utilities, other than power is, is on the, uh, at the corner of the site. Um, we, we are looking at this on a temporary basis. We're not asking actually to subdivide this property at this point. Uh, that portion of it can be handled by a conditional use, uh, permit from the city of Umatilla as this is in the UGB of, of the city of Umatilla. So what the request is from, uh, the other Commissioners is to have the ability to, uh, discuss, negotiate, and bring back a solution, um, up to two acres of this piece of parcel on a temporary basis.
Is there a plan for water and sewer out there?
Actually, there's, there's a couple of different plans on water. That's the biggest hangup on, or Commissioner Schaefer, to be honest with you. Uh, it may be a shared water from additional landowners that are nearby, which would cause for a split, um, residential use, um, or a split commercial use, depending on which one. As far as a temporary, um, sewage portion, it would be basically a fill and pump. Uh, we would bring in, they would bring in, um, pumping trucks periodically every other week, every week, whatever is necessary, and would be hauled to the city of Umatilla.
So, good. Well, I was just gonna ask if that was motion.
No, no. I, I, a comment I made yesterday with the East Umatilla County, uh, homeless coalition, uh, that oversees the Promise Inn and, and other things. And it appears in here you have made provisions that you would have both, um, temporary housing, transitional housing, temporary housing, you rent in the huts, and a separate warming station, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the warming station would, would, um, involve the modular that has been funded, uh, through the Oregon Legislature and through Representative Greg Smith. That would also include things like showers, restrooms, meeting areas, and, and, uh, homeless or a warming shelter, I'm sorry, homeless, but a warming shelter. The homeless portion would be, um, either pallets or huts or conestogas, um, depending on what the selection is of the different, different groups that are involved. The one thing that we would, um, require is fencing around this, this, uh, facility. Uh, even if it's a temporary facility, we would ask that it be fenced and secure.
Okay, I, I know that because we're starting to, the East Umatilla County, uh, Commission is getting its arms around what the, the various needs are, and they aren't, uh, generic.
No, they're, they're not.
They've indicated that they're, some of the homeless are interested in the, in the temporary or transitional housing. Other homeless individuals are only interested in a warming shelter when conditions suggest that maybe a temporary place to go, uh, because of the warming. And it appears you've accommodated that.
It's, it's been an interesting, um, adventure to get here. It started, like I said, with the city of Umatilla and their public hearings. Um, and, uh, and I'm not sure if, um, counsel wants to weigh in right now, but there's a couple of different cases in front of the Ninth Circuit and different circuits around the country is if one municipality has a, a shelter, can another municipality transport their, their houselessness folks to that and, and be, uh, and satisfy federal, federal, uh, trans, or, uh, transitioning laws, um, successfully? The one thing that we're doing here that is a little different than all of those is we're actually using the county property as a central point. Um, and it seems to strengthen our case that it can be, should be, and, and would qualify as a regional facility. Now, counsel may have different, different interpretations, but it's, it's kind of all over the board right now. And one of the reasons for a temporary shelter is to wait until the Supreme Court actually is weighed in and, and, um, will give direction on, on the sharing of facilities.
Um, that's correct. Um, basically what this is, this is to address the houseless situation. It's not to address the situation of municipalities trying to prevent people from sleeping in public areas, which is not really a, a county issue. That's gonna be more the municipality, but it's really up to the courts right now whether or not a regional facility will be, uh, available to be used as an alternative shelter so that then they can enforce their ordinances within the cities. And that's still up to the courts whether or not that's gonna be allowed. At the present, it isn't.
As, as a very naive Commissioner involved in this, there is so many different facets. Uh, everything from childcare to mental health and addictions to warming stations to, to houselessness, that this issue is just almost overwhelming, and it's one of those you have to eat the elephant one small bite at a time.
Right, and again, the case of the one here, uh, that actually is overseen and managed by CAPCO, which I think would qualify as some sort of regional oversight, would it not, counsel?
It would, it's just that the question is whether or not, yeah, like say the city of Long Free Water could utilize that as a shelter to, so that they can enforce their ordinances.
Right, there's no boundaries on utilization.
Right.
Be happy to know also that when we meet, we meet regularly with officials from the city of Pendleton, and they have consistently pointed out, uh, how appreciative they are for the existence of the shelter and how well it's working, and they're having the difficulties. The other thing I would like to insert into the record is that when we discuss homeless shelters, we typically address only substance abuse and mental health. Um, hint to that, we should also add general health. There are homeless individuals who have health issues that are neither mental nor substance abuse related. All right, we have a motion.
I would move to, uh, move forward with discussions with the, um, the name municipalities, uh, that they try identify a temporary facility on these two, if you identify two acres of the property and, and, uh, the city of Umatilla, UGB owned by Umatilla County.
Sir.
Tom Fair, say aye.
Aye.
Post-retirement employment.
I don't think Mr. Primmer is.
He could not make it. His state-issued computer is having difficulties in his communication.
Um, basically, he's in support of the next item. Uh, it's a request to allow a community corrections employee to retire under PERS and then come back, uh, and work for the county in the post-retirement, under the, uh, personal policy four point seven. Uh, this individual plans to retire November thirtieth, so this would be for, through, authorizing the individual to work the remainder of this year as well as two thousand twenty-two.
And I, I have spoken with Dale about this, and he is very much in support. And with that, I would make a motion to approve hiring of PERS retirees temporary special employee under the restrictions of personal policy four point seven with benefits and salary consistent with current position.
I'll, I'll second that with, with one comment, and that's that I, at, at some point, I, I, I would like to see a further discussion on, on that policy, um, to some degree. Because it's a little bit confusing to me. Anyway, um, second.
Hey, Tom Fair, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thirteen, collective bargaining agreement ratification. Mr. Gray?
Okay, okay, I guess.
Counsel?
I guess, um, this is before the board to ratify the ASME collective bargaining agreement for, uh, the Public Works Department. It has been ratified for, um, by the members and is now before the board for county ratification, uh, for a three-year collective bargaining agreement. Um, aspects of it include a four percent cost of living, uh, effective, um, July one, twenty twenty-one, um, and then also a three percent and a three percent adjustments for the, uh, following two years. Uh, there also is an increase in the health, um, HRA, uh, boot allowance, and also the calculation of longevity from years twenty through twenty-five.
Could you repeat the couple of, please?
It's four percent, three percent, three percent.
Thank you.
Do we have a cost to the county of this?
Uh, yes, I financed, via, I don't know if we have that, leave the bars. But yes, it was, uh, done, and, um, uh, the Public Works Director was part of it as well as finance.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think it's important. I believe the CFO sits in on negotiations, isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, we would not be moving forward without his approval.
I'm just curious what the answer was.
All right, give a motion for adoption.
Move to approve.
Sir.
Tom Fair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Letter of agreement.
Uh, this is also coming from the Public Works Department. There are four, um, positions that are being requested to be reclassified. Uh, these have the support of the, uh, planning, uh, the director, I think, is now on the line. Um, these would re, um, adjust the placement of the, uh, four positions, um, all with associated, uh, increases in, uh, salary.
Questions?
Move for approval of the attached, uh, LOA between Umatilla County and ASME, local thirteen ninety-three.
And when would that be, July one?
Sir. Tom Fair, say aye.
Aye.
Um, it's not clearly clear in the request when the effective date was. Um, but does the board want to make this effective back to July first along with the collective bargaining agreement? Or effective today, or?
It does not appear to mean that this is a, a bargaining issue as much as it is simply a move to reclassify.
Yes, that is correct.
And there's no compelling reason to make it an emergency retroactivity.
It does say, and I'm looking at this right, it does say July one, twenty twenty-one at the top. Can you scroll down to the letter, right there, at the very top, right?
No, I'm sorry, yes, it does say July one, twenty twenty-one. So that, it's clear in the letter, okay. Sorry about that.
Thanks.
So, it's been answered.
Well, just for the record, I still don't think it's a good idea. All right, uh, exempt salary schedule.
Um, as a result of the, uh, new ratified collective bargaining agreement with, uh, Public Works, um, they, uh, that, uh, cost of living adjustment was four percent. And, and it has been the practice is that the exempts, um, receive the cost of living adjustment each year equal to the highest cost of living under all of the collective bargaining agreements. Um, originally, it was three percent, but now with the new ratified one, um, it is requested that the exempts also, uh, it received the benefit of that. So, uh, it'd be a four percent, um, increase. And then also the longevity would also match the, as that under the collective bargaining agreement.
I just wanted to make clear for the public's knowledge that this does not include the elected officials.
Correct, those are done separately. This is only for the.
I wanted to make sure.
For staff, so, and.
With that, Mr. Chair, I approve, make a motion to approve that we set the quota increase for the exempts and administrative salary schedule at four percent and update the calculation method for longevity.
What was the, uh, second for a question? Uh, what is the longevity for this?
Um, the longevity piece is that from, normally longevity up through year twenty, with some exception, is, it's increased every year at half a percent. Uh, from the years twenty through twenty-five, it was done all at once at year twenty-five. It has now been, under the, um, proposal, would be done yearly, just like it is for everything else. So from years twenty through twenty-five, it'll be the same as years twenty and below. So it'd be a half a percent each year.
Thank you.
We have a motion to second. Tom Fair, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item sixteen, public works organization.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Uh, for quite some time now, we've been, uh, working on a reorganization plan for the department. Um, it, uh, a number of issues became evident. One, we, uh, have no, no real succession planning out here. Um, a number of years ago, due to funding, we elected to reorganize and, and actually cut some of the top tier positions so that we could put, so we could maintain, uh, the folks out on the road. And now it's become evident that we re, we need to make some adjustments in that. Um, so, um, with the help of, of, um, um, human resources and, um, uh, county council, uh, I started working on this, uh, some time back, and we're just finally bringing it to the board for approval to reorganize, reorg, who? Reorganize the department. Um, this does add the potential for two positions. One would be a, uh, assistant position to the Public Works Director, and then the second would be a, uh, a overall supervisory role for the entire road system.
And I noticed the pinky doesn't include the organization chart, but Tom has also, uh, put together a, a, pretty, along with, with Jennifer, put together a, a complete org chart, um, that identifies where both of these positions fall and their responsibilities. They put a lot of work into this, um, taken a lot of input, a lot of different, different directions on it. And I think it really sets us up to have a professional public works, uh, um, department moving forward. Tom's put us in such a great shape that, that, uh, just carrying on is gonna be important. The problem is, is that he does a lot of different jobs. Um, he probably has as good a relationship with the state and federal agencies, um, as any public works director around the state. And, and he knows where all the nooks and crannies are, and we need him to teach somebody. Um, and I think that this position lines itself up very, very, uh, very well with those goals, uh, that have been established for, by Tom. And I think if you get a chance to look at the new org chart, the way it flows is, is pretty professional. It, it looks really good.
It is attached to the pinky.
Is it, okay.
It's not on the online piece, but it's on the copy.
Anyway, thank you for all your work, Tom and Jennifer, on this. I, it's, it's, uh, it came out even better than, than expected, that's for sure.
Just a comment, when you, uh, produce the final version of this org chart, could you move it from two-point type up to something more readable?
Keep writing that tongue, Tom.
He doesn't do a very good job of that.
Not an age issue, so it's, thank you.
I just put my glasses on, Commissioner, and, and it, and it increases it really well.
Mine wouldn't, all right.
I would move for approval of the, uh, Public Works Department, uh, org chart as submitted, along with the approval of Assistant Director of Public Works, position range thirty-four, and also approve the Operations Supervisor, position range thirty. and also approve the Operations Supervisor, position range 30.
Sir.
I have a comment, uh, but not specifically related to this, I'll call for the vote, Conover say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Perhaps directed at, at human resources, it has been a, an initiative from the commissioners to, uh, give serious thought to succession planning, something that the county had not historically done. I think we have made some moves in that regard, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know that there's any other outstanding departments, are there, Jennifer?
I think we can talk about that later.
She just pled the fifth.
Yes, she did.
I mean, I, I think it bears with, add a further discussion with commissioners at another time.
Well, I, I, I guess then I would reaffirm the fact that the commissioners are interested in continuing, uh, to consider succession planning. I realize one of the major departments where you have not done succession planning is because it may be reorganized at the time of an opening, so, uh, but just remember that's from the commissioners, an initiative we want to go forward with. All right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Darnes?
Yes, I do have, uh, commented, uh, on, on a fairly serious issue. Uh, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Rivers Democracy Act, it's a act that Senator Wyden has introduced at federal level to add, uh, a substantial amount of new acreage and, uh, river streams, gulches, and, and intermittent water areas to the Wild and Scenic, um, Rivers Act. It's called the Rivers Democracy Act, um, he did have a town hall, has taken public comments. Um, it's pretty, e- even though Umatilla County doesn't have a lot of miles involved in the Rivers Democracy Act, the miles that we do have are impactful. Um, for an example, um, Harris Park falls within the, the Rivers Democracy Act, several pieces of private property, several pieces of the landlot, private property and BLM property, and other areas in Umatilla County, put this at odds with several of the collaborative groups that are in motion and working, some for many years, some for just the last year, uh, to come together with solutions. Um, so this is going to be a major hindrance, I have had talks and conversations with Senator Wyden's office, and, uh, they, they have promised to come back and have further discussions, uh, concerning some of our concerns, and, and I, I would say that including Harris Park in a wild and scenic, uh, Waterways Act is, is a major concern of Umatilla County, uh, and I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out.
The, the thing that troubles me on that, uh, issue is Senator Wyden did respond to questions from the Eastern Counties Association, and in his answer, question one from EOC A talked about private property, and his answer says, "I hope that I can put to rest your concerns in this matter by stating unequivocally that the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act, which amends, does not affect management of private property." Yeah, but, but you're telling me it, it...
It'll, it'll definitely affect how we manage Harris Park, it'll, um, directly affect private landowners and how they access their homes or, uh, their cabins, um, it'll, it will, in, in several different areas. His interpretation, I, I, I don't know, and, and can't speak for the senator and, and what his, uh, interpretation of effect is, but for us, the interpretation is very direct.
And that, that is concerning, you know, so I, I appreciate you looking into that.
Thank you.
One other comment for the record, um, it has in the past been practice of the commissioners to have the planning liaison conduct planning hearings, uh, we overlooked that this time. I would remind us that that's what we had adopted or decided to do several years ago, and I'm most anxious that we restore that.
I didn't have a feeling shirt.
I'm just pointing out that's what we had started doing, and we get, and we moved away from that.
Didn't, didn't even know that, so...
I know, but we, since we have new, new participants, all right, anything else?